I'm making motion to approve the minutes of match 28, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
David, aye.
All right. Why don't we take care of these mandate for the digital plan submission? This is the first I've seen of this, Jack. Who put this together?
What is it?
The digital submission plan?
Oh, yes. CMR PC did it. I can explain. I was approached by the assessor and then CMR PC about requiring when they's, when applicants submit as built and when they submit final plans that they also submit them digitally and that those digital formats are compatible with the assessor's software as well as with the CMR PCs. And most towns do this now and it will save the town money because right now through the assessor's budget, they are having CMR PC pour through all the plans and trying to make sure that they're in sync with their software, their GIS software. So it seemed like a no-brainer. I did talk to Damon about this. Bill, you weren't back yet, but so we put it on you, Jeff?
All right. I see there is a public hearing. So I will open the public hearing regarding this. And, I mean, it seems self-evident.
Do we have to change the bylaw or anything to have this become valid?
We need to amend the subdivision regs. It requires a public hearing, but just a majority vote. And then it does not require a town meeting vote. Did you send this out electronically by any chance?
What's that?
Did you send this, that this paperwork out electronically at some point?
Uh, no.
So this, Jack, this isn't going to be seated in the zoning bylaws then? It's just going to be a requirement?
It's in the subdivision regs.
Oh, it's in the subdivision regs, okay.
Not the zoning bylaws.
Okay.
And I didn't touch the format and I just copied what actually what CMR PC is asking for.
Yeah, I didn't.
Bill, do you want the?
This would be deletion and an addition.
If I have a copy, I can scan it to Damon.
This would be deletion and an addition.
Of this?
Of the changes? Is that what he's looking for?
Well, I, I put, I went through the bylaw and deleted and mostly added, not so much.
Okay, but we don't have a vote on anything deleted.
Um, I wish I could have had a mocked-up version of the by, uh, rules and regulations, but I'll take your word for it, Jack.
Well, you know, you know, you don't have to. We can wait two weeks. We can table and continue it.
Yeah, why don't we do that, actually?
I'm not, I'm not married. There's nothing immediate about this. We don't have to go to town meeting. It's just your vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if, Bill, if you read it, then definitely let, let's hold off on it.
Yeah, let me, let me take a look at it.
First time I saw it.
It's the first time I've seen it, so.
You make the motion, I'm continuing.
Yeah, I need a motion, actually.
The 27th?
Yeah, the 27th is our next meeting, right?
No.
The 27th?
The 25th.
No, the 25th.
The 25th.
I'm making motion to continue to April 25th at 7 o'clock.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye. David, aye.
Bill, aye.
The meeting of the 25th, I'm going to be late.
Okay. How late?
Should be here by 7:30, quarter to 8:00.
Okay.
I'll make sure I'm there in person on that meeting. I just got out of work late tonight. Sorry, Bill.
No problem. All right. Thanks, Damon. All right, so we'll move on to the next matter. Set that aside for now. Next matter will be, we'll continue the public hearing for 5 Morrison Drive. You did, you have not prepared a, a report yet, right, Jeff?
I did not, Mr. Chairman, no. I was given documents two weeks ago, revised documents. We got under our way within a day or two. The staff engineer working with me, the project engineer worked for me, gave me feedback within a few days. Been buried with work and doing what I can. I did not put a written report out there. I did have a telephone conversation with Mr. Drexel today to go over the things at his request. The other, late last week, we exchanged emails and I said I'd be in touch with them Tuesday or Tuesday this week. But nevertheless, we had that discussion today at his request. And the revisions made, like I told the board two weeks ago, they were not make or break for the project, but they needed to be done to address this. For example, without getting into the details, we, we talked through the remaining issues that are still on the table as of the documents we submitted two weeks ago. And it's my understanding from the discussion today with Mr. Drexel, and I don't want to speak for him, that he's, understands my, my point on a few of the matters because I seem to be saying X and he was addressing Y. But nevertheless, I think after our discussion today, I believe he understands what needs to be addressed and revised to have what I would call a clean set of documents. The biggest concern we had, again, was the width of access between buildings, between the parking spaces and the provision of five feet of pedestrian width in front of the buildings. Even the plans I received two weeks ago, two of the buildings, all three buildings had the walkway labeled five feet wide, two of the buildings had it drawn five feet wide, one did not. And that just compounded into the, it looked on the plans that the access between the parking areas in front of the buildings wasn't going to work when we got done discussing today. I, I showed them how I believe it would work, but nevertheless, the plans have to show what the plans have to show. In other words, five feet wide has to be five feet wide. The other paper revisions to the hydrology comps, computations with respect to the infiltration rates need to be corrected. I mean, that infiltration rate was what, what was settled on with DC Bates back eight to 10 years ago. And it's been an issue on, on our review since day one. And please, I'm not trying to put down the design engineer. I'm basically frustrated. And, and I was getting the feeling today that I'm being told that I'm slowing up the parade here. And, and you know what? I had enough. So with that said, the documents can be revised. And I'd like to think that they will be. And they're, I'm comfortable with the design, but the details need to be clear, straightened out once and for all.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we've, I, I think we've been around this roof for a long time.
Can I speak from the owner's behalf?
Sure.
Peter Janta Franklin Flex Base, or Men and Flex Base LLC, owner. And I'm frustrated as well. We've been here over freaking 10 months now. And what I'd like to see, if we can't agree that the plans are 98% of the way there, approve the project with conditions, those conditions being we'll hash out the, the remaining 1% or 2% issues, get plans before we submit for a building permit.
Well, I mean, first of all, I'm not comfortable doing that because we've been around this road, you know, for 10 months, like you said. Why these issues weren't taken care of?
We address these issues, we get feedback six weeks later from your engineers.
You know what?
So that's hard to work with. That's hard to work with.
Hold on, I'm talking. All right? The problem is, when you submit plans and, and you're asked for adjustments, don't blame him for the six weeks. He gives you a report. Go make those changes.
I agree.
And that hasn't happened. I've seen his report, even when I was out, I've seen his reports and they're not being taken care of. So that's not him. He doesn't have to keep reviewing stuff that you guys aren't doing right. He's asked to go over the plan again and again and again citing the same problems.
Oh, excuse me. I, I know you're frustrated. We are incredibly frustrated.
We ju, we just want this done.
We're paying thousands and thousands of dollars for this, too. There were a number of issues. We did take care of a lot of them.
You did.
Last few items in that five feet, I, it's insane.
I mean, you're asking for...
We've got to get them done and nail it.
Yeah, I mean, but you guys see the bylaws when you come, like, we do low-impact development now.
Yeah.
It appears that's not going to be addressed because you guys are asking for waivers against having to do any type of, uh...
We're doing impervious pavement instead of pavement for the parking. So how is that not addressing the low-impact environment?
Okay, so that's one aspect, there's no...
So use your aspect.
Mr. Chairman, they are providing impervious pavement on a small portion of the lot, not the entire lot. So...
We'll expand that if, if that's the request to the town.
My point is, it's a valid statement that they are providing impervious pavement, but it shouldn't be spun in that, that it's throughout the site because it's not.
Yeah, and I mean, we require, we require some type of growth now in, in our development site plans. That doesn't appear to have been, you're looking for a waiver from that, it appears.
I didn't realize that. But I don't know why we're doing that.
I mean, we require, you know, trees and...
Yeah.
Has any of that been cited on the plan?
This, the, the low-impact design, we've incorporated into the plans as best we can, as much as possible. There's also in your regulations that, you know, the board has the prerogative to go above and beyond. If that's, if that's what you want to do, then we'll have to address that. Nothing was ever said about, about doing this, this, or this.
It's in the zoning bylaw, as long as that's...
But it says, but what I've done is, I've done what you've asked in, in the bylaws. If you, if you want us to go above and beyond what's in the bylaws, then that's your prerogative. No one has ever said anything to us about expanding, uh, impervious pavement or anything. The design has been like this from day one. As a matter of fact, this, this design goes back 10 years.
Yeah, I know. We had the same problem then.
Well, no one ever said anything until tonight.
Around then, too.
And as a matter of fact, you know, going back as far as turning this thing around, you know, I, I send the plans over to, to the reviewing engineer. I get, I, they had six weeks to review these. I get comments back the Wednesday before the Monday meeting. So, you know, I'm trying to get this thing turned around in time for the meeting.
So in the form of continuance, it's hard to meet the requirements.
What I should have done at that point was said, hey, we'll get a continuous and end, and not done anything until, you know what I mean? We had the time to, uh, to get it, to get done and review it.
That's absolutely right. That's what you should have done.
But we were told that if we didn't do this by this meeting, we were going to be screwed by the town. And we were told in no, no uncertain terms at the last meeting that if we didn't perform by the 25th, you're out of here, which is why we're here today.
Right, exactly. So we, we understand what we need, right?
Well, the comments that we have, the comments that, that Jeff and I talked about today, there's virtually a handful of comments. I've taken care of them pretty much on paper right now. And all I'm looking for tonight is an approval with conditions that we address those comments plus the waivers that we need, that we sent in earlier. And then what I'll do is I'll compile all that on the plans and then submit them, you know, to, to Jeff's satisfaction. And, and I'm sure he'll speak for you if he looks at them and says, yep, this is what I want. Some of this stuff is a judgment call, you know, as far as the design, uh, design issues are concerned. I understand that. It doesn't, it's, it's not earth-shattering. The comments are not something that's going to completely change this whole...
So why wouldn't we be able to finish all this up by, by, by the 25th?
I want to get, I want to finish meeting tonight. I want to get the approvals on waivers and also the approval on the handful of comments that are left. And I will do these plans tomorrow. I'll get it, I, I need to review it and they'll be out the door tomorrow, latest is Wednesday morning.
Do you have a copy of the waivers?
Yeah, each person has a copy.
We have them.
That's what, that's what this is here.
Mr. Chairman...
Yeah, go ahead.
Before we get into the waivers, I'm here in about six weeks on our end. I'd also like to point out to the board that we issued a letter. We keep very clear track of the dates when we receive documents. And we've issued letters on September 16th, November 18th, and March 23rd. And I just want to call to the boards of attention that as of November 18th, it took the rest of 2021 and three months in 2022 to get documents to us on March 1st for which we responded on March 23rd. So again, the blame doesn't fall just on us.
I'm not blaming anybody.
It's not a game, that's not the game we want to play.
I'm tired. Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm...
Hold on, we got a couple...
Damon here. Bill, I, I was, I was on the, we, it took three meetings for him to come, he didn't even have the right applications for the first three meetings. Nothing was filled out. There is no delay on our end on this at all. This is all on their end. If they're frustrated, it's because of the way the engineer is proposing this. Jeff has not done anything wrong. It's been delay after delay on the applicant's part the whole time. And I don't believe that anything should be left with, that we should do anything with conditions. Get the plans right and bring them in and then we'll take care of it from there. I don't know what anybody else feels, but that's my call.
Jack?
Go ahead, Jack.
Uh, you know, I'm not going to get into tit for tat, but I am going to tell the board in my short tenure here, I find Graves Engineering outstanding.
I agree.
I am just...
I agree.
I don't disagree.
We don't disagree.
We do major projects, so I know, and Jeff's been with us for...
Well over 10 years.
Yeah, we're not, and we've never, to be honest with you, this is the first project we've had this problem with.
Yeah.
Okay? Every other project, we, he sends a report, stuff gets fixed, we don't relive it. This just keeps going over and over. And that's why I'm not going to approve a, a plan tonight that I'm not sure is what we want in the end. We can discuss the things here that you're looking for, but on the 25th, bring us back a plan that's complete.
Can we discuss what we have and make sure that what we discussed today gets incorporated into the plan so there's no surprises?
Sure. All right. I don't know if you want to lead this, Jeff, with the...
I think it would be appropriate if the applicants team led this so that they can present what, to the board what they would like to.
All right.
I haven't, I haven't gotten Jeff's letter yet on the latest comments. I know we went over them on the phone today. So I'll get, I get a hard copy of that and make sure that I have everything in there. But the, um...
We have some items you want addressed here tonight.
Yeah.
Let's worry about those.
Let's worry about the waivers.
Let's focus those.
We wanted, yeah, we want to talk about the, um...
The other stuff, the other stuff that Jeff, from his report, that you haven't addressed already on this, I expect that you'll have done by the 25th. Because I, I would like nothing more than approve the project, to be honest with you. I mean, I don't like coming every meeting and having to relive the same thing. So let's, the 25th, you know, you work with Jeff, get the final stuff that Jeff wants on the drawing done, and we'll address these right now, so when you go back, you'll know what we're dealing with.
Okay.
Exactly. So, so the waivers that we're asking for are on this. I think I forwarded that list to you folks...
They've got it.
Last week, or week before.
Yep.
2.03 point C point I I, um, for the parking space, um, they wanted a, a...
You're jumping around on me.
Yeah.
I got 4.02 first.
What's the first one?
It's on the first page. This is your letter.
Yeah, I know.
It's on the first page, I think.
And we can go in any order you want.
Which is page 1, 2, and 3, Bill?
Yeah, yeah, this is the first one on the, on the number.
Okay.
This is, this is the letter we got from you. Why don't we do it this way?
Okay, okay, let me have, let me look at that.
Give him that one.
I have these here in a rough form.
Need another copy?
Yeah.
That'd be great if you have it.
I don't know why he doesn't have a copy of his own letter.
Okay, she put these in reverse order.
Well, oh, that's what it is.
Thank you, Gil.
All right. We ask for the waiver on this requirement. The site, as you know, has been already stripped and so forth. So it's not something that we can, uh, that we can save. It's been cleared for a good part, for the most part, and rough graded. So we wanted to, uh, some relief from that. What we can save in the front of the property, we are certainly going to save that and not cut anything down. We're going to clear out, clear the brush and everything out of the detention ponds. But other than that, it'll pretty much stay the way it is. But again, it's, it's already been stripped from before and...
And let me ask, is the intent of the town to add trees in the front or landscaping?
Yeah, I mean, we'd like to see some landscaping, at least along the road.
Yeah, that, we have no problems with that.
I have, I have some trees along the front that, uh, propose, um, for the, basically in lieu of the parking, um, areas, instead of putting them in between the parking spaces.
Yeah. Front load them in the project.
Put them out in the front of the road. So that was another waiver that we were asking for as well, rather than put them in the, in the parking, in between the parking spaces. Because we don't have a row of parking spaces with curved islands. So, um, so we put the trees out front, uh, near the entrance.
Yeah, which, which... It's fine.
Which makes sense. Okay.
Put them on the front.
So 402J, what was the other waiver regarding the trees, Bill?
Uh, the next one is, um...
I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, if we, before we finish up with 402J...
Yeah.
They are proposing four trees out along the street, which looks, looks, looks all right. You had asked me my thoughts and my opinion is, looking up the driveway, looking to the left side of the driveway, if there are mature trees along the left side of the driveway that stay, that's great.
Yep.
If, if it's all scrubby and ends up getting cleared, I think that's, that's an opportunity that maybe some landscaping could put, be put after the detention pond so that there's nothing crowded between the detention pond and the driveway. But between the, after the detention pond up to building two, perhaps there could be some infill if there's openings along that driveway because that would also be seen from the street.
So some trees there would help.
Yeah.
Then let's do that.
Okay.
Just so we're clear, if you're putting any kind of landscaping in there, I need to know how many plants and what kind of plants they're going to be.
Do you have a preference?
We'll have a landscape plan.
Hang on. Do you, do you have a preference for species?
Well, the, the town has a, has a list, uh...
As long as they're not invasive, that's the only...
Okay. Don't tell them what they want. Yeah, we'll, we'll do some non-invasive, good-looking trees.
We, we intended to...
Yeah, it is approved town list, so...
Okay.
We intended to do some selected clearing in there to clean out some of the dead wood and the brush and so forth. So like Jeff said, if there are any bare spots, then we'll, we'll fill that in with something from your list.
Sounds good.
We'll take a look at it, um, we'll take a look at it this week and, and see where that is and we'll spot them on the plans accordingly.
Okay.
All right. So XI, a landscaped area will be provided along the length of each property line. We just addressed that, didn't we?
Yeah.
So they're two run together?
Yeah, they run together. Okay.
Okay.
I see another one here regarding storage on site, snow storage.
Yes, that was being relocated, correct?
Bill, where's our snow storage?
Oh, actually...
That was behind the...
You're on the 402.
Yeah, 402 HI 7.
HI 7, okay.
Second page.
That was relocated.
Yeah, second page.
Yeah, the, um...
That was behind the bill, building number three, we relocated that to the, between one and two, to get it away from the weather.
Yeah, the, the, the site lighting, we're not going to have any high-mass lighting at all. The lights will be on the, like wall washers on the buildings themselves, which will be controlled by, uh...
Am I...
So I'm confused.
Yeah.
We're talking about 402HI 7, which is information of location, size, parking, loading and storage, on-site snow storage. What's that for lighting?
And the waiver request is, is...
For lighting.
Is for lighting.
It's, it should be the lighting there.
Wait, does it say anything about lighting?
Well, let's follow this letter.
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah, but it...
I see what... All right.
It is, it is, it is the lighting that we're looking for, the, uh, the...
Yeah, which is the next, uh...
That's the next, yeah.
Yeah, you got these kind of in the wrong spot. It goes all the way down that way. You've got the waiver request in front of the, okay, we can, we can deal with that. We can deal with that. We can deal with that. So actually, the, the only thing we don't have a waiver request for is whatever you're trying to imply versus 402HI 7.
I don't know what that is.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure, but HI 9 speaks to lighting.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure if there's a typo or what's going on, but...
But the I doesn't, we didn't talk about lighting.
Hmm.
I didn't see lighting before. But it is the snow we want to address right now.
Yeah, it's lighting.
Well, now, it's, the waiver request is for lighting, but the, the, what he's pointing to in, above it, the 402HI 7 is regan, location, size of existing proposed parking, loading, storage, on-site snow storage, service areas, parking locations based on requirements of section 203. He's asking for a waiver for lighting that obviously they're not, that doesn't apply.
Correspond.
Doesn't correspond.
Right, it corresponds to the one down below.
Right. It corresponds to 203CII, which is each parking space for every use...
Every one's reversed like that.
Yeah, yeah.
They're all reversed.
Yeah. Let's just deal with them one at a time. We're going to have to get back to 402HI 7 because I don't see a waiver request on that one. Each parking space for every use, excuse me, I'm reading. Each parking space for every use, with the exception of single or two-family residential dwellings, a minimum of 20 feet, 20 square feet of landscaped areas shall be provided within the parking area. Parking areas should be defined as the area used for parking, backup space, driveways associated to the parking lot. So you're asking, you're requesting a waiver for variance from this requirement as rows of parking spaces are five feet from the buildings with striped access to the garages. We believe this requirement is not conducive to this development and cannot be implemented effectively.
So I guess we're asking for a trade to put the trees up front instead of in the parking area?
Parking aisles, yeah.
Okay. I mean...
As opposed to a waiver? I don't know if that's, I guess it's a waiver in an addition, but...
Yeah.
It would be a waiver.
It would be a waiver.
Okay. Just a total number of trees can stay and...
Yeah.
It's a matter of where you put them.
I mean, I, I don't have an issue with it. What's your feeling, Jeff?
I don't have an issue with it either.
Yeah, okay.
But I don't have to vote on it.
Parking areas shall be strongly encouraged to be designed to include landscaping, to include low-impact development techniques, yeah, is what we're talking about.
And does, the, the areas behind the buildings are proposed per previous papers.
Okay. The request of variance from this requirement is...
And we can do more if that's something that you guys desire.
Bring it up between the buildings and...
We, we can even park in front of the building if you wanted to.
Do we gain anything from it?
I get worried about, it's a high-maintenance type of...
Yeah, then let's not do it.
...surface where the backs of the buildings, I'd like to think, won't see nearly as much traffic and use as the front of the buildings.
Fair enough.
And for that reason, I'm comfortable with it in the back and I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't advocate for it in the front of the buildings.
Okay. All right. Next one. Surface parking lots will have 15 parking spaces servicing uses located in highway business or general business must have at least one shade tree, pervy 15 provided parking spaces.
What number is that, Bill?
Wall was, is here.
On the last page?
Last page.
The request of variance from this requirement is a rows of parking spaces against the building's access. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't really have issue with those. I don't know if the other members do.
Not really.
I didn't, we need, we do need to address, you're moving the, where the snow storages?
Do we have a copy of the plan?
Yes, that...
Yeah, I, I've already done that, I believe, on the latest plans.
So what, what type, you're not requesting a waiver for that, then?
I'm sorry?
You're not requesting any type of waiver for that?
Snow removal, are we requesting a waiver?
No, I, I'm providing the, I'm providing the number of, quantity of area that I need for snow.
You're moving it up to the front of the property?
No.
Oh, you're moving it to the back?
Wait, wait, it, it was behind building three, up against the weather. We moved it over the other side of the lot between building one and two, that open area. That's the parking space.
So the back corner, back corner?
Yeah.
Behind...
Do you agree with that, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So a waiver should not be necessary. Okay.
I'm still confused on this lighting one. Still gotta find... I don't know what you're doing with that.
See this submitting a waiver for the lighting? What, which town ordinance is that referred to?
I think it's this, it goes back to section 203. That's why I included this in there, because it refers back to 203.
And 203 is what...
Where there's a feature in there or...
I don't have problems with wall washing lighting. I prefer, because you go to put...
He said it's on a different project.
It refers to 203, and that's why I put that in.
It's not even the project.
It doesn't say anything about lighting.
The calculations for the, for the light.
We don't, I mean, obviously, there'll need to be lighting on the building.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I don't have a problem with...
They'll be on the building, signing down.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't have a problem with lighting out around the parking lot. I mean, that's up to you, you guys, I mean.
Okay.
As long as it's not, you know, reaching out into other properties.
No, no, it'll be into the interior of the site, down.
I don't have a problem with those. I'd like them cleaned up, you know, this is...
That, that 4.02HI-7, the reason I included that was, that refers back to, I think, section 2.03, which mentions about the calculations for the lighting.
Yeah.
And that's why...
I don't think with wall washing lighting, you're gonna need to worry about that.
It should be, we don't need a lighting drawer, I don't think.
Yeah, no, not if it's on the building.
Okay.
It's only when it's perimeter lighting that we need, we need...
So, but that's, that's what we intend to do in...
Jeff, is there anything else outstanding that we can address tonight to make sure that they've got all the information they need to wrap this puppy up?
One thing I'd like to speak of briefly, yes, this should be addressed by the board. The loading places, each, each unit, if you will, has its loading space designated as, as reserve, which makes sense to me, because it's under the control of the unit leasing. And they can park it in front of it, and then if they're getting a delivery, they can move their vehicle, take the delivery. They're looking for a waiver to allow that loading space to be basically duplicated as a parking space. I'm personally okay with it. It's not like a commercial facility where you got customers parking and you have to have the loading facility open all the time. So I'm fine with it, but I think it's something that would, would be helpful to give guidance to the applicant's team if the board has an issue with it.
The only thing, you know, the latter condition for this, Jack, too, is when loading is being done, you gotta make sure you keep the fire lane clear. I mean, if those, if the fire chief, who's right around the corner, even sees that that's blocked, he's gonna...
The fire lanes are behind the building, is that correct?
Well, yeah, but they still have to have access to it.
The fire lanes are behind the building?
But they have to have access to it.
Yeah, and we don't anticipate 40-foot trailers coming into the site. It's gonna be like a box truck, someone pulling up a pickup truck and unloading.
Yeah, as long as they know where they're packing and they're out of the way.
Yeah.
They're gonna be active.
Before we're done, I gotta talk to schedule for all here.
What's that?
It's not gonna be like a mini storage facility.
No, it's, it's gonna be 20-foot-high contractor, plumber, electrician, pull in, put in your piping and your wood and your equipment.
It's not gated. The gates come in, you need a code or all that stuff.
No. And then an office showroom.
All right, so let's talk about a game plan here, where we go from here.
Mr. Chairman, my schedule, I will be out of the state from Thursday, April 21st, through and including Monday, April 25th. I will visit my daughter three quarters of the way across the country, and I will not be accessible and won't be able to do any work from the road.
I gotcha.
And, and I know the board's desire to address this on the 25th. And I, I feel now the timing's gonna be tight. Timing's gonna, could, it shouldn't be, but given the workload everyone's got, I'm sure it's gonna be tight. So I'm not sure how the board would want to deal with it, respond with it. I'll do everything I can up until the evening of the 20th, and I can only do so much, or if the board's willing to possibly consider going farther route.
It's up to them.
I don't have a problem with that.
It's up to them, they got a request to continue with.
Maybe you guys don't have a problem with it.
What if we got you plans this week?
Yeah, this week.
That would help. Review, and can you review and send an okay without being here?
I intend to turn this around and get it to you as quickly as I can.
We'll meet with you at your office tomorrow if need be, and then sit with you until it's done.
So we'll check these few things out in the field and then we'll, we'll get it on the plans and...
Yeah, whatever.
If you want, I can give you a call when the plans are complete and everything, and then maybe sit down with you over in Worcester, if you'd like, and come there or...
Wherever you're at.
Expedite it, I don't mind.
It, it helps the communication, but with, to the point where I, I think you understand what I'm asking for, which isn't much.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And as long as you can address it, by the time you look at, we, we sit there and point at it in printed form, if it's not right, he's gotta go back and fix it again, so I don't want to waste your time.
Yeah, unless we got a laptop with it on the computer.
I'll, I'll give you a call when the plans are done and let you know we're sending everything out to you. And I'll send it straight to you of everything.
It's Monday, we'll shoot for end of the day Wednesday.
All right.
Is that practical, from your point of view?
I'm hoping to get them in by the end of this week, with what we've got in front of us here.
So Wednesday, Thursday?
If he can get them to me by the end of this week, I believe I can...
It's the 15th.
It's 15th. I, I don't expect a timely...
You're not giving yourself a week.
I'm only, yeah. The way things have been, I've been working weekends.
Not giving yourself a week.
Yep.
Ah, it's so busy right now, for everybody.
Yeah, that's part of the issue.
When's the meeting in May?
May 9th.
Far off for you guys?
It's not okay with...
It's not election day.
It's not, because we've gotta drop that date on the, from the owner of the land.
I don't even know. What's election day, John?
We've got the, we've got the land under agreement for first, subject to the rules being done. And the owners being a bit...
Yep.
Perform or hit off the pot.
Yeah, first thing Friday morning would be fine.
Okay.
Into, if they could be delivered to my office by 9:00 AM Friday morning.
Electronically, paper-based?
Unfortunately, paper copies.
Okay.
Okay, I'll get your paper copies.
Okay.
Just one sec. Just one sec.
I'll, we'll print them out Thursday and I'll drive them to where they need to be.
I'll drive them out there personally.
Okay.
You guys are on the driver's seat, it's up to you guys to get it done. If you don't get it done, then we're talking next.
Jack asked me to post the meeting Thursday, the 14th.
Even with dealing with stuff like this, it's...
Okay.
No, I...
I can post it with them.
I, I was out of town for the last meeting, so I apologize.
Yeah, we're gonna post it in.
But I won't be around to send anything to you that Jeff sends next week, because I won't be here.
Jeff, you have my email, right?
All right, absolutely, I sent...
By default, you get them all?
Yeah, I get them all the time, too.
Jack tells it to.
Yeah, I know, I had Jack to that.
He already gets them by default now. And if there's other, if there...
Jeff, when's your last day at work? I, I missed that.
Wednesday, the 20th.
Did you have a question? I see his hand's still up there.
Um, no, that's...
That was before.
Wave him bye-bye.
But if, but if we get it to him and he likes, if you'll, we get it to you, it meets your approval, you'll send them a thumbs up.
Oh, absolutely.
And then, then that's hopefully takes care of...
Jeff's good at communication, so he'll, he'll get it to you.
So it's, the ball's in our court to get them thumbs up.
I, I was gonna say, I can even start drafting a decision if, if I, it looks like it's gonna be done.
Let's shoot for the 25th, then.
All right, so I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue five miles and drive till the 25th of April, May, May, April.
No, April.
We're thinking Josh's problem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Damon.
Okay.
All right, did your last shot.
This is it.
So that's, we'll put that to rest tonight and we'll get rid of this on the 25th.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
What else we got, boss?
Uh, we got the approval, or recommendation to approve the road at Brookview Estates.
Saw an email on that where, and we're gonna be able to get...
Jeff went out.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I issued a ASBIL plan review letter today. I am going out to the site with a highway surveyor tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM. Sorry, no, that's our second stop. I'm going to Nymuckas Steeves at 10:00 AM tomorrow morning, going over to Brookview after that.
All right, Nymuckas Steeves.
As far as this project, Brookview goes, you believe it when you see it.
Me.
Oh, you roll.
What's that?
Brookview Estates, construction went very well. Quality of the workmanship on the road and the road-related infrastructure was fine. But nevertheless, we'll be setting our eyes on it again tomorrow morning. Top course pavement went on the roadway last October, I believe it was. Again, things, things went well. The whole construction process has been fine with both the developer, Daniel Bedrosian, and with the contractor, P.W. Brown Incorporated.
No, Daniel makes sure his stuff comes out.
He does a good job.
Does a good job. Question is, do you want us to hold off until your, do your final inspection? Are you comfortable where it's at?
I am comfortable where it's at.
I draw it.
Okay.
It looks great, I mean...
If there were anything needed to be addressed, knowing both the contractor and the developer, I don't expect any issues about it getting, taken care of. And, and the last project we did with Mr. Bedrosian, it went smoothly as well.
Is this the ASBIL, or is this the final?
I received an ASBIL plan and things were in order on that.
Okay.
And a construction and acceptance plan. The one question I did have, and I don't know the answer to this, is whether or not the stormwater basin is gonna be, have to be maintained by the town or if it's gonna have to be maintained by a homeowners association. The point is, the, the acceptance plan does not show an easement for the stormwater basin. So that led me to believe that there might be a homeowners association responsible for it, hence no need for the easement. But on the other hand, I wasn't certain, so that's why I put it in my letter.
There's a statement.
I, I talked to Alan about this, and I agree with everything Jeff said, but Alan, he, he was nervous. He wants to be out there and lift some of the grates and stuff and really make sure that it's past his muster. And he couldn't get out there till Tuesday, evidently, I don't know.
And Jack, that's what we're gonna do tomorrow morning. Usually when he and I walk the site, we'll open manhole covers and take a look inside and all that sort of thing.
And we need to find out whether it's, whether it's under homeowners or whether the town's responsible. I mean, towns are making more the responsibility of the development these days than... I mean, it's something we should be doing more of, so the town doesn't have to maintain it.
So you wanna hold off till 25th?
Does it show an easement on the plan, Jeff?
Not, not around the detention basin, Damon. There is, there is an easement for the drainage pipe that goes between the buildings.
So you're assuming that, that indicates that the homeowners association's gonna take care of it?
That's what I read into it, yeah, but I don't know for fact one way or the other.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, is there a time that the Board of Selectmen needs an opinion from the planning board?
Yeah, well, I think it's...
The 27th.
The 27th, yeah.
So that does give...
Well, we'll be able to do it in the meeting.
I'll have something written up by the end of the week, based upon what we look at tomorrow, probably Thursday.
Is Daniel gonna be there, or is the contractor gonna be there?
Uh, we did not invite them. A lot of times, we go, the first trip is by ourselves, we learn that upon...
Well, if you happen to see them, they're probably not there anymore, they're probably off the project, right?
Right, they've got a project going in a different town up north of Worcester.
You're probably doing that one, too, aren't you?
I actually, yes, yes, we are.
That's why I knew about it.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll have to track down with Daniel, whether it's under an association or he's gonna have to provide an easement.
It, it would mean a modification, I believe a modification in the acceptance plan, but I'm not sure about that. I don't, it's gotta be documented somehow, what, what easement is being conveyed to the town.
It's true. If, if, if he intends on conveying that, that has to be on the ASBIL.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll get, I'll try to get off those, I don't know.
He's a good guy, but I mean, we can reach out to him, I mean...
I just tried giving him a call, he didn't answer, but I know there was...
Damon.
There was a homeowners association for that majority of that place, all the landscaping, everything, so I wouldn't be surprised if that stormwater basin is out of that, but...
Damon, can you confirm that, can you confirm that with Daniel?
I just tried giving him a call, he didn't answer, but I...
It's an email. All right.
And Mr. Chairman, with respect to the grading of the stormwater basin, that was shown on the ASBIL plan, and we're good with that.
Okay. All right, why don't we continue this just until Alan's happy with what he sees at the... I don't want him coming back in yelling that we approved the road or recommended approval and...
It's, it's great to work with him, it's great to work with the Highway Department, DPW in any community. I've been in some situations where that's not the case, and it, it's harder than easier. This has worked very well, and I think, so I'm glad we're going out there tomorrow.
Okay.
I make a motion to continue Brookview Estates till April 25th.
No, you don't have to make a motion for that.
What's that?
I said, oh, it was a discussion tonight.
It's just a discussion.
Yeah, discussions.
Yep. Okay, so I'll put it on the...
Yep.
Yep.
Damon, I need it.
We don't need a vote to move this, this is just a discussion on approving it.
Okay.
We'll need a vote after we decide we're gonna allow it. And I think that dispenses of the agenda tonight.
Who's got something? Who's got something?
See you, guys, thank you. I didn't see you out there.[1787.38]
Take care of that.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care, Damon. Hold on, Damon.
Hold on, Damon, we got Bruce Clifton here.
Ah, Bruce, come back there, Bruce.
Hi, gentlemen, how are you? I know this pawn, the states, has been on nothing but headache.
All right, everybody, like, avoid.
I went through on the gentleman's behind me, my driveway goes across his property, and there's no easement that I could find on his deed.
Which, can you show me what you're talking about?
So, going around with this, I mean...
We talked about this earlier.
Yeah, we, yeah, we talked about it, I just, last evening, Bruce talking about. All right, so you're right here.
So I asked...
Now, who owns this property, lot 16?
Close to 16, yeah.
So it's all sold off and done, right?
All sold off, everything's all done, but there's an easement for water, I mean, for electricity on his property and that stuff there, but I could not find an easement for the driveway, so before...
Over there away?
Uh, no.
But I can see.
So I just wanna double-check to make sure that's done.
Jeff, do you have a set of the final plans for Pine Estates?
I'm not with the...
Right, can you?
I, I, I'll come over there.
Yeah.
I tried to look back for the minutes, 'cause I know it was talked about and everything like that, but I didn't find it.
So there's, um...
Close twenty-four-wide driveway easement.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, I...
I remember your driveway well.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's actually in this guy's property.
Okay.
So we need to make sure that easement's there, or we're gonna have to request a modification, 'cause that was discussed in the meeting.
Okay.
I recall that meeting.
So it says it on the plan, it doesn't say it in the deed?
Yeah, and how'd that get off the plan?
Well, it was, it was like driveway easement right on the plan.
Who gave you this?
Got it from Land Planner.
Bob Barton?
But this, this is not the land plans that show the division of the lots, so I wanna look at the land plans, uh, one stamped by a PLS that created the meets and bounds for the right-of-way and all the lots and all the easements, to see what they show, this helps, thank you.
That was the original set, and then I asked for permission for this here, and Bob threw it in, and everybody was okay with it.
Okay, this...
They put the driveway in, but it's not on that guy's deed, I don't believe.
I suspect...
What address are we talking about?
Which one?
Your, your...
Mine is 54 Joyce.
Lot 16?
Lot 16, but I don't know what the house number, the street number is.
I think it's two.
So it's two, Plon?
Plonview.
Plonview?
Pohn, just Pohn.
Just Pohn.
And this is an obsolete set of plans, this is probably the first mental, because there's no revision date on it, so. I'll take a look in our office and see what, what we have.
Are you looking at the ASBILs?
I've got, well, I've got the definitives that were approved by the board.
Yeah.
After revisions.
I don't know how we're missing that.
I do have the ASBILs as well, the ASBILs would not show something like that, 'cause it's a private easement on a private, on a private lot, but nevertheless, I'd like to look at the subdivision plans to see what was on there. The other thing that can be checked is that the registry deeds, what was conveyed out when the developer sold the lot to whoever, whoever purchased it.
He promised me if he didn't do it then.
Did you, uh...
Tried to do that.
Did you go on the registry deeds and look at?
There's another one that we're gonna deal with over on the...
I went on.
You gotta do it on Murray Park, Stakesville.
I didn't find anything where, I mean, I'm not the brightest bulb, so I don't know, but I think, like I said, there's easement, I have electrical there, and even for...
I don't see what you can find out, Jeff, if we need to go back to him to, to add that easement, they're gonna have to do it.
We, we haven't accepted that, bro.
I mean, I, it's gonna be difficult for...
There's a, there's a new power involved.
Every time you turn the owner of the lot.
Yeah, but, but that's, uh...
But nevertheless...
Yeah, Nick something, I can't remember his last name, but...
You get on with it, my old...
Yeah.
Obviously, he probably knows your driveway's on the property.
Yeah, because I have a piece...
I told him I would take care of, so he doesn't take care of that, it's his property, but I take care of it, um...
And he just sells it here, or does he need it for upland?